All right, the time is now seven o'clock. I will call to order the regular meeting of Lansing City Council for March 24th of 2025. Mr. Clerk, can we have the roll?
Certainly, Councilmember Brown.
President.
Councilmember Carter.
Here.
Councilmember Garza.
Here.
Councilmember Hussein. Councilmember Hussein is absent. Councilmember Jackson. Councilmember Jackson. Councilmember Cost.
Here.
Councilmember Palli Vanaglu.
Present.
Councilmembers Spadafor.
Present.
There are six members present in quorum. Councilmembers Hussein and Jackson are absent, and we are to the meditation and pledge of allegiance.
Is there anyone that needs to be remembered tonight? Mr. Clerk?
I'm sad to announce that we lost another great long-term election worker who was also a volunteer in our office, Mary Jackson, so our thoughts with her and her family. Thank you.
Is there anyone else? All right, can we please rise for a moment of meditation?
Thank you. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
You have for approval the March 10th council proceedings.
Vice President Carter.
Yes, I will make a motion to approve the March 10th minutes as president.
We have a proper motion in place. Is there any further discussion or updates on these minutes? Seeing and hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose. Passes unanimously.
And we are to special ceremonies. We have a tribute in recognition of Cesar E. Chavez's memorial observance.
Councilmember Palli Vanaglu.
Thank you. I will be going into the well if we have any community members that would like to come forward to receive this tribute. Hello? Okay. Well, thank you. I am joined up here by here by some community members. This is a resolution to discuss the 16th annual memorial celebration, celebrating Cesar E. Chavez, and I'm going to read a portion of this tribute. Whereas Cesar Chavez was born March 31st, 1927, in the North Gila River Valley in Arizona, on a small family farm his grandf- on a small family farm his grandfather homesteaded. His father lost the farm during the Great Depression, forcing the family to join some 30,000 farmworkers who followed the crops throughout California and lived in tents and makeshift housing that often lacked bathrooms, electricity, or running water. He was 10 years old when he began working in the fields and was forced to leave school after the eighth grade to help support his family. And whereas for more than three decades, Cesar Chavez led the first successful farmworkers' union in American history, achieving dignity, respect, fair wages, medical coverage, and pension benefits. His motto in life, "Si se puede," or "It can be done," embodies the uncommon and invaluable legacy he left for the world's benefit. And whereas March 31st is now Cesar Chavez Day in the United States, a national holiday honoring the life and memory of this great labor leader, role model, and hero of our United States of America. And whereas on Monday, March 31st, 2025, marks the 16th annual Cesar E. Chavez Memorial Observance, with the theme "To Make a Great Dream Come True," the first requirement is a great capacity to dream. The second is persistence. Be it resolved, the Lansing City Council encourages residents of Lansing to attend the 16th Annual Cesar E. Chavez Memorial Observance, held on March 31st, 2025, at 12 noon here in the council chambers. And with that, I will move this.
Okay, we have a proper motion in place. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose. Passes unanimously. Congratulations.
And we do have with us this evening some community members, educators, union members, community advocates. We did hand the tribute to Guillermo Lopez, who is the lead of the Mid-Michigan Latino Leaders for the Enhancement of Advocacy and Development.
Thank you, Ms. Palli Vanaglu. Appreciate this, councilperson. With me is Maria Enriquez, a longtime activist in the union, and of course, Ms. Martinez, who is a member of the committee and running for city council. Anyway, I'm sorry. At any rate, we're all members of Lead of Michigan Lead, and we're here to receive this, and we're just glad that we're given the opportunity to help and sponsor in different ways this program for the, actually, it's probably the 18th anniversary, something like that, 18 years that we come to City Hall and have this program in honor, in honor of Cesar Chavez. So thank you very much to council. Appreciate it. To mayor, thank you, and all for the support you have given this program through the years. Thank you much.
Okay, we are to, we are to comments by council members and the city clerk.
Any comments by city council members? Appears not.
Thank you. Just want to briefly note that a small portion of Lansing residents, those who live west of Waverly, on the south side, do have an election coming up. Because of a desire to save funds, we are running that election in conjunction with Delta Township, so those of you who are eligible to vote in that election will be getting some additional information. And those of you who are on the permanent mail ballot list, who live in that area, will be getting your ballot in the mail probably this weekend or the beginning of next week. And with that, we are to community event announcements. If anyone here with us tonight has a community event, we'll give you one minute to tell us the details.
This thing's on. Oh, yeah, it is. Okay. Anyways, I am Nicholas Zandi, president of the Old Everett Neighborhood Association. I will just announce that there will be no neighborhood meeting in April. Again, our means are going to be my monthly. It's gonna, the next neighborhood meeting is gonna be on the third Wednesday of May, I believe, which I forget which day that is. You can correct me if I'm wrong, but I think, also, on August 3rd, we are planning a neighborhood picnic at Debbie Stabinow Park, which used to be known as Washington Park before that got renamed. So if anyone is interested in that, please go. Again, August 3rd will be our neighborhood picnic. Our next meeting will be in May, not April.
Thank you. Any other community events?
May 21st.
Guillermo Lopez, Lansing resident. I take this opportunity to ask you to save the date, Memorial Weekend, May 23rd, 24th, and 25th, for the Cristo Rey Fiesta, the annual, it's the 45th event, so just save the date, and more information will be coming out. Thank you.
Thank you. Other community events?
Good evening, everybody. My name's Tiersen Walters. I'm an at-large member of your Lansing Park Board. Just want to let everybody know that the 26th is going to be the final open house for the Park's master plan. We want to make sure that this master plan is representative of the city of Lansing as possible. We want to make sure that the direction it's going in is going to represent what the citizens want. The 26th at Letts Community Center, that's going to be 5:00 to 7:30 this Wednesday. Please come out, not only come out, but fill out the online survey so we know what you want the Parks to do for the next five years. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay, seeing no one else, we'll move on. Now is the deadline for registering for public comment on legislative matters and show cause hearings. There is one show cause hearing tonight, so if you want to speak on that, you do need to sign in on the green form in the back with Haley in the next minute. And then if you want to speak on legislative matters, which is the public hearing, so it's items five through 19 on the agenda, although I will note that items 15 and 16 are being polled, they will not be acted on tonight, but you can still comment on them if you wish to. So for all of that, anything you wish to speak, sign in the next minute. And with that, we are to the mayor's comments.
Mayor Schor.
All right. Mr. President, I'm going to just talk a little bit about a few comments, then you want me to do the budget summary now.
That's fantastic. Thank you, sir.
Thank you. She didn't want to do it and then have you say, "No, no, do it later." Appreciate it. All right, so I'll be quick. We do have a variety of things going on. Grosspec, the golf course, is open, but it's only walking, no golf carts because of the weather. The weather, it's wet still, but the golf course is open even though it was snowing today. The Michigan Avenue reconstruct, I know we've been telling everybody it was going to happen starting today, but that has been pushed back to March 28th due to the frost laws, so we have not hit the appropriate point in the frost law, so Michigan Avenue reconstruct will now start March 28th if you get questions on why there's no construction going on. Lansing Living, our next edition will be out the first week of April, so keep an eye on your mailboxes, and it'll be online. And we have a few events. This Thursday, our Human Relations and Community Service staff are holding a housing fair at Letts Community Center from 5:30 to 8:00 p.m. On April 1st, the Board of Water and Light is holding their Community Resource Fair at Guyer from 2:00 to 6:00 p.m. Also on April 1st is the Crosstown Showdown, so hope to see everyone at the stadium as our lug nuts take on the Spartans of Michigan State. April 8th, we will be doing our, or HRCS will be doing their homeless study public meeting, and for council members, they'll also be coming to discuss this with council during their budget time. The council president has set some time for them, and we have, we've got them coming in at that time. Also, oh, and last but not least, our fire department has a partnership with 311 now, where people can call 311 to schedule appointments for car seat installation. Many of us with kids remember years ago that the fire department would do like a one-day event. You'd come in and they'd test your car seat. They do it with the hospital. Now, you can do it, basically, you can call to schedule it. So we want folks to call 311 and say, "I'd like to schedule a car seat installation." Also, I was pretty excited, we found out on Cabinet on Monday, that we have 12 new paramedics that are, that are in training and that are coming in. And for those who've talked to our IAFF and our fire chief, we had some concerns about paramedics, so having 12 new paramedics as part of the new firefighters coming in, that's, that's good news. Good news for our city. Okay, in terms of the budget, today is budget day, so congratulations. We have provided you a budget. There was one in the packet either Friday, or it got added on Saturday, and then Jake Brower has provided the line-by-lines for this meeting now, so you should have had it probably between Committee of the Hall and council. I know he was working on it in our office right up to now, so you should have it. In terms of items, it's about $307 million total budget. The general fund is $173 million, which is a 4.7% increase from the previous year's budget. But in addition to the 4.7% increase in revenues, we had significant increases in costs due to pay increases for employees, as per the CBAs, in addition to employee reclassifications and healthcare. So we're addressing as much as we can with the, with the limited additional dollars that we have available. As you all know, we have many requests to navigate. You all put together a great budget resolution in October with about $4 million in additional spending requests. Our department directors beat you and probably put in about $5 million in additional spending requests. So we're not able to fund all the requests, but we did try and honor quite a few of the requests that came from council and our departments. Sample, I included in the budget $150,000 for a new firefighter, which is in addition to the 15 new firefighters that we brought on through a grant, and that was in both the council and department requests. We included $300,000 to continue the advanced piece, which is our successful intervention program, and I know that that was discussed in the community and through our departments. And we included $3.5 million expected from the public safety revenue sharing that the legislature is working on. I have been assured that that's going to pass this year, early this year, and we continue to talk to our legislature about that, and if that passes, we have the $3.5 million the same way we did last year, and that would be for the 10 police officers. We have significant dollars for training, replacing vehicles and equipment, and funding both physical and mental health services for a lot of our folks, especially our first responders. We included an additional $75,000 for facade improvement, which I believe was both the council and department request. We included a total of $17.5 million in road funding dollars. Council requested us to go to $7 million in road funding, and we put in 10. We had dollars that we wanted to repurpose and put towards roads, and then if you add in what the legislature is working on, if it were to pass, we would go from 14 to 42 million, so we would be able to get significant roads fixed in the next few years. So that's good news if the legislature passes it, but we put in 10 of our own. We put in $154,500 just in Lansing-Eaton County. Councilman Hussein's not here, but I know that there are concerns raised from folks there. We put in $1 million for sidewalks. I know that was a council request that has come up a few times in a few meetings, and it was also the Public Safety Board request, so that's an additional $300,000 from last year. We put in $50,000 for temporary speed bumps. Council's put it in the last few years, and we have added it, and we'll try it out. You know, the public service believes that the regular speed bumps are just as cost-effective, but I understand council's request of, you know, put them in, and then if you want to move them, because they're temporary, we're gonna try it. We put in $200,000 for liquid brine for anti-icing and de-icing, and that is the, one of these preventative measures to, that we can put down on streets before it gets icy. We've talked about this a lot. I know the council president gave us some contacts at MSU, which we are following up on, but Director Kilpatrick thought that would be important, so we put that as a council and community member request. We put in $4 million for city fleet, which is a council and public safety board request. We put in for a new wastewater treatment plan operator, which was a department request, and engineering tech, which was a department request. $700,000 for playground equipment repair and replace, which came from the Parks Board, so thank you to the Parks Board members. $385,000 for tennis court and pickleball, also from the Parks Board. $500,000 to repair the Rudder Park Fountain, which I think was in the council resolution, as well as Parks Board. I'm almost done. $75,000 for a study of a community center in southeast Lansing, which was a council request, and we funded it. So we're gonna, we'll go out and do that. I know Councilman Garza, that's been a big issue of yours for many years, so we're gonna, we're gonna do that study. I know there was a sustainability officer request. Councilman Jackson's not here. We do have two staff and an intern, and three I-team, and the I-team are going to be testifying as part of our budget, so you'll hear more about what we're doing there. For economic development and planning, we added a premise officer, which also does code and zoning, and that was a council request. We put in $20,000 extra in the neighborhood advisory board. Again, I think the neighborhood advisory board will be thrilled about that. And then I wanted to mention that, in the budget especially, our golf fund is down from $100,000 last year to $15,000 this year in subsidy, which is really good news. It was $400,000 when I first came in, and now we're down to $15,000. So it's good news. That means our gross spec is doing well. I don't have the amount on me, but I'm sure Jake will talk about the amount that we had to put into pension and OPEB, but that's always significant, so we want to talk about that. That funds our obligations for pension and healthcare. And last but not least, we did not allocate all of the available resources. We left the fund balance at 13%. That means that there's $250,000 that can still be allocated by council if you choose, or it could remain at 13%. I know last year, there were things that were passed by council, and I had to veto because it was taking it under 12%. I'd prefer not to do that this year, so we left $250,000 that is available if there's a position that somebody wants or that council wants to do without having to take away from anything else. So that is there. Again, if there's no positions added, we have a 13% fund balance, and that's just as great. So that's kind of the highlights of the new pieces to the budget. Jake will do his presentation in two weeks, and then you all are going to have lots of fun conversations with our department directors and community, and we look forward to it. So, I don't know if you want to do Q and A or you just want to move on, but that's, that's what I got, Mr. President.
I appreciate that. I think we can, we can probably move on, and we'll do Q and A with Jake later on. I just, Michigan Avenue, reminder, businesses are open on Michigan during construction.
Yes, business, yes, thank you. Businesses are open, and go and buy stuff, and businesses are open. So thank you. We're 100%.
Thank you, Mayor Schor.
Okay, with that, we are to show cause hearings. We have one show cause hearing. Item four, orders to make, save or demolish, to 1033 Shepherd Street.
Councilwoman Palli Vanaglu.
Thank you, President Cost. Yes, this show cause hearing is, pertains to 1033 Shepherd Street in Lansing, Michigan. The original red-tagged date was January 1st of 2022. Neat Team Enforcement began on October 7th of 2011. There has been some property activity. There have been eight premise violations since the property was originally red-tagged in 2022, and a zoning violation in September of 2024 due to storage of junk, vehicles, and trash. The SEV of this property is $31,900, and the cost to repair is estimated at $82,009. The city does recommend 30 days to make, save, or demolish. Thank you.
Okay, we didn't have anyone sign in to speak for this hearing. Apparently he's here. Do you want to?
Sir, yes, you can speak for up to three minutes. Can you please state your name for the record?
So, William Russell.
You have three minutes.
I was just, I thought I was coming in here to talk to you about the fact that you guys had no rights to enter my home in the first place. You guys broke the rules on what you guys were supposed to be doing. You forced your way into my home. You, basically, it should not be red-tagged. You guys basically legally red-tagged me at this point. Because you guys did not, the code compliance officer was not allowed in my house. Like, she went into my house without my permission. She turned around, and even the guy that put the stop-work order permit, as I was talking to the building inspector, I can't remember who it was, Bill or Bob, I was working with him, and then the guy put the, the bill, whatever, building inspector, ended up putting a stop-work order on my house, which he wasn't even technically, legally, an employee when he put that on my house yet, because he was employed the 30th, and he put it on my house the 28th. And, I don't know, I just don't see any reason why, I don't know. That's really all I got to say about it, for the most part. And I don't know what you're talking about with 2011, because I wasn't, I didn't own the property then. I don't know. That's about it, I guess.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. So on the referral of the show cause hearing?
Public safety.
And that committee meets tomorrow? Is that correct?
Correct, at 4:00 p.m. behind us.
Okay. In the meeting room behind us. So, sir, you're welcome to come to that meeting as well. All right, we are now to public comment on legislative matters, and as I indicated, that includes items five through 19 on the agenda. Item five is a public hearing, industrial facilities exemption certificate, transfer from Altam cells to LG Energy Solutions. And is there an overview on that?
Vice President Carter.
Yes, so we had Carl from LEDC and Lisa from the External Affairs, she's the director of External Affairs of LG, LG Energy, and that was on March 10th. They shared and discussed the requests for the transfer of the existing industrial facilities exemption certificate from Altam Cells LLC, and as Clerk Swolp said, we will be pulling the items 14 and 15, but we are still offering for a public hearing today.
All right, our first speaker is Nick Counselor, followed by Brian McNamara. And you have up to three minutes.
I'm speaking for 204 Kavanaugh. Since the last meeting, we are still just waiting for the building permit to be approved. After that, we have a mechanical final inspection, plumbing final inspection, and electrical final inspection. At the last meeting, I spoke of everything that's already been done to the property, which I'll go over just a little bit again. New roof, new AC, new furnace, all new electric, all new plumbing, all new house, pretty much. The house is, I would say, 90% complete at this point, just waiting for those final inspections and just some final cosmetic things. But besides that, the house will be ready to go on the market, and will be a great, great house for somebody. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Brian McNamara, followed by Eric Almquist.
Yes, I'm here about 1616 South Cedar Street. A few weeks ago, you had a meeting that I missed because I was sick, and I still got some sinus and stuff going on, but I was informed that I needed to be at this one. I've got a piece of paper here from my plumber that's going to be pulling the permit for the plumbing work, and so can someone get a copy of this and enter it? And do, do I have how many months, you know, to get this completed, the plumbing end of it? The framing, the drywall work and the siding work was done and approved, and all I've got to do is the plumbing and painting inside of the house. But I would like to know what time period I've got left before you guys decide you want to bulldoze my house down and stop your property taxes from coming into the city. You know, I honestly think that it's a wrong thing to do to most people. And I don't know, and maybe one of you can tell me, do, do I need to pull an electrical permit to, are they going to make me install three smoke detectors, one on each level for that particular home? And that's pretty much all I've got to say.
the plumbing work, and, so, can someone get a copy of this and enter it? And, do I have how many months, you know, to get this completed, the plumbing end of it? The framing, the drywall work and the siding work was done and approved, and all I've got to do is the plumbing and painting inside of the house. But I would like to know what time period I've got left before you guys decide you want to bulldoze my house down and stop your property taxes from coming into the city? You know, I honestly think that it's a wrong thing to do to most people. And, I don't know, and maybe one of you can tell me, do I need to pull an electrical permit to, are they going to make me install three smoke detectors, one on each level for that particular home? And, that's pretty much all I've got to say. So, would any of you know anything about an electrical permit? Do, I mean, or am I allowed just regular smoke detectors with batteries, or is it code now that it has to be hardwired, all three of them? Does anyone know?
Sir, I would suggest reaching out to the Code Compliance Department. It's my understanding Raleigh and you talked today, the director, and he's going to work through these issues with you, the Code Compliance Department will, to get your house to safe, so we don't have to make whatever decision needs to be made.
And, then I'll just wait a minute for that copy of that, and my minutes are up, so I'm done. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Eric Almquist, followed by Nicholas Zandi.
Thank you, Honorable City Council and Honorable Mayor, for letting me speak here. I appreciate that very much. I'm coming here to talk about the bathroom ordinance, which I think, which I think is an ordinance that is looking, a solution that's looking for a problem to solve. I think the idea of it, to protect people from being sexually assaulted in the bathrooms, I understand the idea behind it, but there's not been any cases of that happening. And while we make focus on that, and we demonize the trans community because of this, we miss the fact that there are 65 leaders of churches that have been arrested for molesting children this year. And we still demonize the trans community. And when we're doing this, the hate crime increases. 2023, there were 2,300 hate crimes against the LGBTQ+ community because of this. And we need to change the focus on that to where it's important. Just yesterday, I was having a conversation online with someone regarding people need to live their lives and who they love and whatever they want to do, and someone came to me and said, "Hey, I hear you're, it sounds like you're a Democrat, and I hope you get the wish that an immigrant breaks into your house, rapes your family, and slit your throat." That's what I heard yesterday. I don't have to hear that every day, but the trans community does. And I've always felt that government should be here to make people's lives better. That's the idea. And when we create things that harm people, and specifically harm different communities, we're not doing justice. These are people who live in our community, who we love, we care about, and they're our neighbors. And I hope you think about that when the vote comes up. Thank you, I yield my time.
Thank you. And to clarify, the council is considering repealing the ordinance that was adopted in 1986. Nicholas Zandi.
Okay. Thanks. So, first off, briefly, on the red tag, looks like there's another property in the Old Ever neighborhood that's been red-tagged. And this is really, really, really getting irritating. I'm just used to that at this point, and I really shouldn't be. Another thing I should not be used to, even though I unfortunately am, is the increased bigotry against the trans community coming from several far-right conservatives. And it's been found out that the city of Lansing has had a longstanding law about bathrooms that have specifically targeted trans people, because apparently they're P-words or something like that, which is, again, the last speaker just told you that there is more evidence to prove that religious leaders have actually done, have committed sexual assault more often than trans community. And if there has been a case where a trans person has done that, it is very, very rare, if it's ever happened at all, which I believe that a lot of this is just nonsense, that several extremely right-wing conservatives have come up with. And as a neighborhood leader, I believe that everyone is welcome at our neighborhood meeting regardless of their background. And I should have a few legs to stand on this, because I actually do have a cousin who just came out as trans. And all I can say is, I'm not Christian, but I pray for their survival in this new administration. And, in saying that, one of the things I know about dictators is, and how to survive them, is to never obey in advance. Because by doing that, you're capitulating to their ridiculous ideals long before they're even implemented. And in this case, this is a case where this should not be, where you should not obey them in advance. Allow trans people to use whatever bathroom they want, even if it's a bathroom separate from men and women's rooms. Because it is just downright infuriating, and we have to see so many sex segregationists justifying the two-gender nonsense, when gender and sex are not necessarily the same category. Sex may be biological, but gender is actually identity-based. It is a social construct. And I am here saying that as a straight, white male. That is all I'm going to say, and I'll yield the rest of my time.
Thank you, that was our last speaker. So we are to the referral of the public hearing, item five, the IFT certificate.
It'd be referred to City Council, I believe is on here tonight, but we're not doing it. Committee of the whole.
Okay. All right, then, we are to the consent agenda.
Vice President Carter.
Yes, I'd like to move the following consent agenda items. The tribute in recognition of Cesar E. Chavez, memorial observance, the grant acceptance for Cities for Financial Empowerment Fund grant for legacy planning, and the support of the city of Lansing's community-funded project request to Senator Gary Peters.
And I believe we've already passed item six, so we're just voting on seven and eight. Is there any further discussion on that? Seeing and hearing none, all those in favor say aye. Aye. Oppose. Passes unanimously.
Okay, we're to resolutions for action. We have three items relative to make safe or demolish for various properties.
Councilmember Pelley Vonaglu.
Thank you, President Cost. And if it's okay with you, I will go in the same manner and read these one at a time without back and forth. Great. The first order for make safe or demolish, the address is 204 East Kavanaugh Road. This building was originally red-tagged on June 27th of 2022, and was heard by a demolition board hearing officer on August 22nd of 2024. It was ordered at that time that the building be demolished or made safe by October 21st of 2024. City Council did hold a public show cause hearing on March 10th of 2025, and as of today, Code Enforcement has determined that full compliance has not occurred, but I do have an update that a mechanical permit application from February 13th of this year is on hold until we receive a building permit application and issuance. And so, with that, I will move the resolution for a 21 make safe or demolish order.
Okay, we have a proper motion in place. Is there any further discussion on this? Seeing and hearing none, all those in favor say aye. Aye. Oppose. Passes unanimously.
Okay, next, we have 1612 Martin Street. This building was originally red-tagged on August 25th of 2023, and was heard by a Lansing demo hearing officer on August 22nd of 2024, where the building was ordered to be made safe or demolished by November 19th of 2024. City Council did hold a public hearing to show cause on March 10th of 2025, and as of today, there, it's been determined by Code Enforcement Office that there has not been compliance. And I would move the resolution for a 21-day make safe or demolish order on this property.
Okay, we have a proper motion in place. Any further discussion? Seeing and hearing none, all those in favor say aye. Aye. Oppose. Passes unanimously. Councilmember Pelley Vonaglu.
Thank you. We are to the last property for make safe or demolish. This is 1616 South Cedar Street. The building was originally, excuse me, originally red-tagged on May 10th of 2011. The, this property was heard in front of a demo board hearing officer on August 22nd of 2024, and was ordered that the building be demolished or made safe by November 19th of 2024. City Council did hold a public show cause hearing for this property on February 25th of 2025. We do have some updates on this, this particular property, and the property owner was here to speak a few moments ago, that he, as well as his wife, were ill and not able to make the February 25th meeting. But he has been working with EDNP on the pulling a plumbing permit, and I believe that is the last item along with hardwire smoke detectors that would need to be completed with this property. With that, I would move the resolution for a 60-day make safe or demolish resolution.
We have a proper motion in place. Is there any further discussion on this 60-day? Seeing and hearing none, all those in favor say aye. Aye. Oppose. Passes unanimously.
We are to item 12, traffic control orders.
Councilmember Brown.
Thank you, President Cost. We have a traffic control order number 2505, 2506, 2507, to regulate parking on Post Oak Lane and Darren Drive. The Transportation and Non-Motorized Section of the Public Service Department received a request from the staff at Post Oak Elementary School to change the times from existing parking prohibition and traffic flow restriction along Post Oak Lane and Darren Drive due to the change in school dismissal time from 3:49 PM to 3:40 PM. And the Transportation and Non-Motorized Section recommends that times for these restrictions include one-way operation of Post Oak Lane be changed to be in effect on days when school is in session for hours preceding the school start and end time, for the hours preceding the school start and end time, as long as the hours are between the hours of 6:30 AM and 8:30 AM and 2:30 PM and 4:30 PM, but specifically within the start and end times assigned on the street. And the Public Service Board concurs with the recommendation of the Public Service Department for approval. That I move the resolution.
Okay, we have a proper motion in place. Is there any further discussion on this? Seeing and hearing none, all those in favor say aye. Aye. Oppose. Passes unanimously.
Next, we have fireworks, item 14, fireworks display license.
Councilman Brown.
Clerk, do we have 13 claim appeal?
I'm sorry, you are right.
No problem. No problem, thank you so much. We have a claim appeal, claim 2158 Hader Al-Sultan, and I apologize if I mispronounced the name, for $585 in board-up fees at 2423 Dunlap Street. The individual came before the committee and did indicate that, you know, times were challenging, but we did have to board up the open windows. And so with that, I motion to approve this resolution to deny the claim.
Okay, we have a proper motion in place. Is there any further discussion on this issue? Seeing and hearing none, all those in favor say aye. Aye. Oppose. Passes unanimously.
Okay, now we're to item 14, fireworks display, and I apologize.
All right, thank you. We all like fireworks at the ballpark. So we have this display license, Lansing Lugnuts and Pryro Technico Fireworks, Inc. at Jacksonfield for multiple dates during the games of May 16th, May 17th, May 31st, June 13th, June 14th, June 27th, 28th, July 4th, 5th, July 18th, 19th, August 1st to 15th, 16th, and August 30th, 2025, and rain date of August 29th, 2025. This is the same vendor we've used for the last several years, and with that, I move the resolution.
Okay, we have a proper motion in place. Is there any further discussion? Seeing and hearing none, all those in favor say aye. Aye. Oppose. Passes unanimously.
Okay, then, we have item 17, setting a new public hearing on form-based zoning.
Councilmember Garza.
All right, thank you, Council President. Setting of this public hearing will be for Monday, April 21st, at 7:00 PM here in the council chambers. During ongoing discussions with the City Council Committee on Development and Planning, it was identified that a mapping error had occurred incorrectly marked most of a neighborhood bounded by South Home Street, East Kalamazoo Street, Mifflin Avenue, and I-496, as R-3, formerly R-6B instead of R-6A. This issue raised during discussions prior to the March 2025 prompted staff to revise and resubmit the zoning map for accuracy. The proposed Second Amendment for the Form-Based Zoning Code simplifies the zoning ordinance by consolidating several residential zoning categories. These changes aim to reduce confusion, eliminate unnecessary distinctions, and ensure no areas upzoned without proper land use review and public input. The Planning Commission held a public hearing and voted on the proposed zoning changes on March 4th, 2025, unanimously recommending approval, seven to zero. This followed earlier Planning Commission approval by a broader set of changes in June of 2024, which had also been reviewed by the City Council Committee on Development and Planning prior to that time. So, public comments on the March 4th, 2025 hearing included support for the zoning amendments and encouraged for infill housing developments and reduced parking minimums. The motion to approve the zoning map revision was passed unanimously. With that, I'd move the resolution.
Okay, we have a proper motion in place. Any further discussion? Seeing and hearing none, all those in favor say aye. Aye. Oppose. Passes unanimously.
Okay, we are to ordinances for introduction and setting of public hearing. We have item 18, that I will read in the title. We have an ordinance of the city of Lansing, Michigan, to repeal Chapter 684, Section 684.04, use of restrooms intended for the opposite sex. The ordinance is read a first time by its title and referred to the Committee on Equity, Diversity, and Inclusion.
Councilmember Spatafor.
Yes, thank you. Councilmember Jackson chaired the committee's absence this evening and wanted me to speak to this, so I will move the resolution setting the public hearing for April 7th, 2025, at 7:00 PM for this ordinance, and then open for discussion, if you're okay. Okay, so, Section 684.04, as the clerk mentioned during public comment, regulates the use, penalizes the use of restrooms intended for the opposite sex. The ordinance was passed in December of 1986 and relies on rather outdated language in the Code of Ordinances. Repealing this language was brought to the attention of the DEI Committee, and doing so would protect civil rights, also would put us more in compliance with Michigan's Elliott Larson Civil Rights Act. It also, we heard public comment this evening about sort of decriminalizing and destigmatizing and working to support the trans community in Lansing, and this law, although I don't know of any violations or citations that have been written under this 684.04, should be repealed and should not be on our books. We had a discussion in committee about a more broad bathroom policy to be inclusive. This is separate from that. This is all about the penalty section criminalizing entering a restroom that does not correspond with your opposite, corresponds with the opposite sex, again, relying on outdated and binary definitions of gender and sex. So, I would, again, reiterate moving the resolution to set the public hearing.
Okay, we have a proper motion in place. Is there any further discussion? Seeing and hearing none, all those in favor say aye. Aye. Oppose. Passes unanimously.
Just a moment, I'm not finding a resolution. Okay. Sorry about that, somehow it's not in the right folder here. We have an ordinance of the city of Lansing, Michigan, to amend Chapter 404 of the Lansing Codified Ordinances to add sex- to add Section 404.15 to prohibit unregistered vehicles from parking on any public roadway, including but not limited to any alley, street, or highway. The ordinance is read a first time by its title.
Vice President Carter.
Yes, I'll make a motion to approve the ordinance.
Okay, we have a roll call vote. Clerk Swope, would you do the roll call?
Councilmember Jackson. Councilmember Kost.
Yes.
Councilmember Pelley Vonaglu.
Yes.
Councilmember Spadafor.
Yes.
Councilmember Brown.
Yes.
Councilmember Carter.
Yes.
Councilmember Garza.
Yes.
Councilmember Hussein. Six yeas, zero nays. The ordinance is adopted.
I motion for immediate effect.
Okay, we have a proper motion in place for immediate effect. Is there any further discussion on that? Seeing and hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Immediate effect ordered.
Okay, we're to speaker registration on public comment on city government-related matters. If you wish to sign in, you can sign in with Haley in the back. We'll give you about another minute to sign in. In the meantime, we're to reports of officers, boards, and commissions and communications.
Vice President Carter.
Yes, I motion that all items, excuse me. I motion that all items be considered as being read in full and that the proper referrals be made by President Kost.
Okay, we have a proper motion in place. Any further discussion? Seeing and hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Passes unanimously.
Okay, we have, from the city clerk, minutes of boards and commissions.
Place on file.
From the mayor, the appointment of Ashley Smith to the Historic District Commission and the appointment of Bridget Boozer to the Historic District Commission and Melissa Reba to the Historic District Commission.
Development and planning.
We have the appointment of Michael Malik Brown to the Lansing Public Media Authority.
Committee of the whole.
The appointment of Michael Ausley to the South Martin Luther King Jr. Boulevard Corridor Improvement Authority.
Development and planning.
And the appointment of Brian Britton to the EDC Tax Agreement Finance and Brownfield Redevelopment Authority.
Development and planning.
We have the appointment of Linda Sanchez Gazella to, as a citizen retiree to the Employees Retirement System Board of Trustees.
Committee of the whole.
We have Act 51, Street Certification.
City operations.
We have two items relative to the Community Development Block Grant Annual Action Plan.
Committee of the whole.
We have the fiscal year '25 to '26 budget.
Committee of the whole, internal auditor.
Grant acceptance for the Michigan Drug Court Grant for Sobriety Court.
Ways and Means, internal auditor.
Sole source purchase, Lansing Police Department request for Dr. David Carter as the vendor for the management analysis of traffic stops.
That'll be Ways and Means and internal auditor.
And the Facade Improvement Program 2324 report.
Committee of the whole.
Grant acceptance for the Kroger Tree Planting Arbor Day Grant.
Ways and Means, internal auditor.
And items from President Kost, re-adopting the codified ordinances, two items.
Committee of the whole.
And setting a public hearing on the budget.
Committee of the whole.
And two items relative to an ordinance amending to allow fireworks on Juneteenth.
City operations.
Communications and petition, tri-county office on aging financial statements.
Place on file.
Communication from Erica Lynn about her complaint filed with the Churchill Downs Community Association.
Administration.
And communication from Mary Irvine in support of demolishing Metro Bowl.
Place on file.
We're to a motion of excused absence.
Vice President Carter.
I make a motion to excuse Councilman Hussein and Councilman Jackson.
Okay, we have a proper motion in place. Any further discussion? Seeing and hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Passes unanimously.
Okay, remarks by councilmembers.
Any remarks? No takers? All right.
Remarks by the mayor.
Mr. Mayor.
Just one. I forgot to mention before, in Committee of the whole, when you were talking about the Ultium Transition Resolution, I think Mark had stated at the time that MEDC would be taking this up tomorrow. That's actually not true. Once it comes off the agenda here, it'll come off the agenda at the MSF meeting because they have to wait for us to pass before they can take it up. So the MSF won't do anything with that until something happens with council. So that will not be on the agenda. We expect that to be removed from the agenda tomorrow on the MSF board.
Thank you, Mayor Schorr.
Okay, we are to public comment, and we have Nicholas Zandi.
This thing's on, right? Okay, so first off, I'm gonna have to complete what I said about during, during the community event announcement. It will be at the same location, Village Lansing, 3525 Southmore and Kane Jr. Boulevard, Suite G, you know, 6:30 PM, you know the rest. And yes, it is going to be on May 21st. That being said, I'm going to be speaking on something in regards to what Jay West, allegedly the current head of the Churchill Downs Community Association, which you've spelled wrong on the agenda, by the way. Forgot to add the S. Whoops. Mr. West said to Mike Lynn after an argument, which I will not repeat here, okay? Because, not just because I'm white, but also because it is just wrong for me to say anything slur related. But he said something, he said something about like Lansing, you know what's, something like, I don't know, victimizing themselves or something, which really does infuriate me. Now, I don't know if you should take my word for it because I'm white, but as a neighborhood leader, I do believe that, yes, while I have said things that I've had to apologize for, we really are, and definite, and as to paraphrase what Patricia Spitzley said at one point, we really are and should be held to a higher standards, particularly when we are representing people in our community, whether they live in the neighborhood or don't live in the neighborhood. Now, yes, I do believe it was, it was heated before I left, and that was before he said anything about that, it, Mr. West. But I will say that regardless of how heated Mr. Lynn was, that is no way to talk to some, to your neighbor like that, whether they live in the neighborhood or don't live in the neighborhood. It is upsetting for me. And considering that the conversation started because of the way they were handling a possible Malcolm X memorial, which, yes, I do think we should consider a better memorial for Malcolm X, considering that the current one is just lacking severely. And that's really an understatement. But, and as the person who's the leader of a neighborhood where Malcolm X grew up, that is, it is unfortunate that Jay West had to say that.
Thank you. That was our final speaker signed in.
Okay. With no further business, we are adjourned at 8 o'clock.